Like to call into session tonight's Albany Common Council meeting, Thursday, September 6th. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Here. 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 Here.
Here.
Thank you. Now we'll move to the next part of our agenda, is the public comment period. Each person has up to five minutes to speak on any topic they choose to speak on. We'll ask when you come to the table, you enter your name and where you live and your address. Also, council members at this time are not allowed to answer or any questions that you might have during your public comment. If they choose so to do that later on in the, in the agenda, they will do so. So with that being said, can the clerk please call the first speaker?
Good evening, members of the council, members of the public. My name, of course, is Marlon Anderson, community advocate in the city of Albany. I reside at 214 Lark Street, apartment 2A in Center Square in the city of Albany. I've come forward this evening to speak about the most pressing concern in the city at this time, and that is the growing tensions in the urban communities surrounding the investigation into the police action that took place a week or so ago. I just want to say that there's a cry and call for justice in the community. There's a cry and call for good faith in the community. And this building needs to hear that call and cry for good faith. There has been a major effort in the last few years towards bringing the community together with the police, and it is in danger of scuttling all them effort that has been put in, in the last few years, because there seems to be a lack of good faith and created trust in the community. There must be a transparency presentation of what happened on that evening, and it must be presented full and open to the public to create that good faith and that trust that is needed, that is desperately wanted in this city. If we are to advance community and police relations, this is a tipping point in that relationship. The community has no trust in its, in the police, even though we have worked hard to create it. I myself have worked with the last five police chiefs trying to create trust between the community and the police. And that is all going to naught because there is a lack of good faith and trust in the community. There must be a demanding, not just from Councilman Johnson, who I applaud for his efforts, but from every councilperson, from every district in this city for full transparency and a full presentation to the public of what happens. Because that is the only way we're going to build the trust and build the relationship that we need to build between our police and our community. We cannot have an adversarial relationship, and that is what we have because there is no trust being created. And that should also be addressed by not only this office, but by the police as well. Because again, we have good police officers on the force, and their names are being tarnished by the lack of transparency. We can't let the whole bushel of apples be tarnished because there's one or two bad apples in the bunch. So we have to have this transparency, and it must be demanded. It can be nothing less accepted unless a full accounting to the public is made. Forget the regulations, forget what we're, what we're doing, that's what needs to be done. If we are going to create that sense of community, if we're going to be an inclusive, have an inclusive relationship between the community that the police serves and the police themselves, then there must be full transparency and there must be a presentation to the public about everything that happens. So there is no doubt in the public's mind that what needs to be done is getting done. And this building, not only the mayor, but the common council should be leading the call for that. Because as I said, there's a cry for justice in the community. And the last time we had a cry for justice in the community, it fell on deaf ears in this building and in this city. And if we're going to create positive police community relations, we can't let that happen again. So again, I am here to task everyone in this room to get together as a body and demand full transparency in this matter. To present to the public, thank you sir, and present to the public what happened and why it happened. So the public can have no doubts in their minds going forward, so that the ends to the speculation that is running rampant in this city can stop. So I task you as leaders, lead on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Can the clerk call the next speaker, please? Charles Robinson?
Yes, Charles O'Barr Robinson, 404 Livingston Avenue, born and raised on this plantation without representation. I seen it last night when I went to the first meeting concerning the legalization of marijuana. Another stolen economy from what neighborhood? A neighborhood that been criticized or get criticized for doing the same thing someone else gonna do. Last night, for the first time, I said, and I understood, when they say the black market, but now the white market is savaging over what? A major economy, an economy that has to be steered a percentage. Cause the community really don't need much. Cause anything right now will help a community that I come from. The one that been criticized, the one that been write, written about, the one that been lied about. I read something yesterday that's very interesting, a concert in Syracuse, New York, forty thousand people. They wrote about a couple fights, a couple of fights. Our cultural events get just criticized too much. Once again, the Boston Marathon, thirteen people, they made it bigger. I came down here to talk about my New Year's Eve party, my family's New Year's Eve on our estate. We're having for the whole city free, free. Why? Cause tonight I pledged my allegiance. And when I pledged my allegiance tonight, I remember what I read in the Declaration of Independence about my forefathers and how they pledged their fortunes. Well, guess what? That's what we're doing. We're pledging our fortune. I'm going to the county legislator with the plan. We are redeveloping our neighborhood. That land bank that been created, no ideal that was stolen. It was an ideal that was stolen from me, just due to history. Two thousand fourteen, me and a steering committee went in front of the county, and they literally hijacked just one of my many ideals. We ain't gonna talk about the Skyway ideal that they bout to build. You know who, you know where that came from? That came from a friend of mine's named Tug. He told me when I was going to the meeting with Chris Spencer, "O'Barr, don't tell him. Don't tell him. They stole." Well, that's yesterday. This is today. If you, the people of this village, don't understand and stop criticizing our culture and allow our culture to exist so that we can have some harmony, so that we won't get shot. We don't get shot. And this, this, before I close, I gotta talk about the boys in blue, cause I love them. The other day, I realized that when I see a cop, I don't see the person. I never got time to meet the person. I always see the uniform. And you know how I feel about the uniform? Why, why shouldn't I? When the government is using the uniform to constantly perpetuate racism?
One minute left, Mr. Robinson.
How was that? How was that? The building department, once again, the land bank. The land bank that was creating, every time they go to displace someone from a property that was given to them, a bank that never bought a property, a bank that never gave a loan, but they a bank. They sent the police, and they, and to people, they speculated that it was a criminal matter, and it never was a criminal matter, it was a civil matter, but they didn't understand. They didn't understand. Well, I'm here, and I'm here to let you know today, read the Declaration of Independence. Next time I come down here, I will read it and make my pledge, and my family's pledge of our fortune, to redevelop our fortune and our ideal that we submitted to the city six years ago, thirty block initiative. Our ideals stolen.
Time's up, Mr. Robinson.
Stolen.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Alana Klein, twenty-nine Glenwood. As you no doubt know, there was an incident involving a police shooting. I planned to speak on that, but I came to a realization about five, ten minutes ago. It's not my place as a white person from the ninth ward to... Yes, I can have a voice, yes, I can voice my support, but it's not my place to have a predominant opinion on this matter. So, Mr. City Clerk, I would ask that if you see Mr. Anderson or Mr. Robinson in the list of names, please pull me after them so I don't preempt what they have to say in the future. I saw some of the press conference that happened mere hours ago, and I can tell you, I have a military police background, and it seems that the individual, Mr. Williams, ran down, ran down an alley, tripped or something like that, dropped a knife, picked up the knife, realized he didn't have any escape route, and he was allegedly, allegedly shot in the, I believe they said, left shoulder approximately a hundred and ten feet away from the police officer. Mere seconds before or after the then-acting police chief said something. He said that the range of danger, if you will, for someone that has a knife charging at a police officer was thirty feet. Thirty feet. He was shot approximately a hundred and ten feet away from the police officer. That's plenty of time, even if the individual is charging, that's plenty of time to ask someone to drop their weapon, demand that they drop their weapon. And additionally, there are conflicting reports that he was shot in the back, in the spine compared to the shoulder. I don't know where the city stands on getting everyone police body cameras. Not that that's made much of a difference in events that have happened in this country, but the video is grainy, it's long range, it's, it doesn't provide answers. So... I don't know, it's, it's just... You cry when you see something like this happen in Minneapolis to Philomeno Castillo, in New Orleans to Alton Sterling. But when it hits this close to home, it's indescribable and it's... I don't wanna say good, but it's...
One minute, Ms. Klein.
Thank you. It's almost a relief that at the very least, Mr. Williams wasn't shot, but he was still paralyzed, and just like Dante Ivy, some kind of settlement from the city is not gonna fix that. Boycott the NRA, Black Lives Matter, Assalamu Alaykum.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Good evening. Our names, I'm Dawu Hag Nicole, and this is my wife, Dr. Teresa Hag Nicole. We represent three-five. We live at 214 First Street, Albany, New York, one-twenty-two-ten. Concern, concern is about, in this day and age of all the police shootings, why do we still always have the police supervising the police or investigating the police? I, you know, since I was a kid, I always taught you not to allow the same people to investigate the same people. It doesn't kinda like make sense. And what happens is, as a result of that, you have a lot of distrust and mistrust amongst the community. Because, you know, for the longest time, things have always seemed not really right. And it's not transparent, you know, like the gentleman was talking about. I saw the, the news conference, you know, I'm a veteran, combat veteran, and I'm still kinda miffed of how you get shot in the back and you bending down facing me or you running towards me according to the newspaper. So, you know, I'm also looking for some transparency. And I'm also looking really for some, you know, there comes the time where we really need to stop allowing the police to police themselves. We need to have outside, somebody outside who has, doesn't have a vested interest. They have a vested interest in making sure that their house stays clean. And we continue to allow this to happen, and this is not in the last ten, this has been going on in this country for ages. We always allow the police to make the decision on the police. And we get upset when it looks funny. Well, it always gonna look funny if you allow me to investigate, you know? The IRS to investigate the IRS. This is the only agency that I know of in this country that does its own policing. I don't get that part. I really don't understand that. Why we continue to allow who are supposed to be helping us? It seems that they cause more harm. You know, and look, I don't know what the answer is, but I do know it comes to a point in time where they no longer need to be able to police themselves. And the investigation needs to be done by outside sources. I have no problems with the police commissioner or whoever he is, but look, that's the last person I need to stand up to tell me that the dude was a hundred and ten feet away, and he bent down to pick up a knife, but he got shot in the back. That just is not making sense, and that's where the transparency comes in, because there isn't none. There is none. That's not transparency. All of us are, I think, educated people. I bend down facing you and I get shot in the back, that seems strange. Now, I'm only going by the facts, but why, what was said on the news conference. He was bending down, okay? How did he get, even if you bending down, how did you get shot in the back? I, like I said, I'm a military man, combat, five years. If I was gonna shoot somebody, when I did, you was in front of me, you didn't get shot in the back, you got shot in the front. Unless I'm using a high-powered rifle, but he's using a revolver or pistol. Those things don't cause that type of damage. That's why we need the outside independent source to investigate these things. You know, that's what the purpose, that's what we as concerned voters are asking for. That's what the neighborhood is asking for. That's what the kids on the street are asking for.
Yeah, one minute remaining, sir.
Why is it always, because we, we raise our kids to tell them that we always use independent sources to identify and verify information, except when it comes to the police. And that is where, and it's not, look, I don't even wanna say that it's a black-white thing. It happens to white people too. Get beat up, all this, that's why we have police brutality. It's not just about a black thing. It's like, come on. At what point do we decide that no longer can the police investigate themselves? I pay taxes, that's what I'm looking for. And maybe our communities will have a little more trust in the police when somebody else can tell us, instead of the police, the guy who did it. And that's kinda like the robber who robbed the bank, but now he's gonna come back and tell us how he robbed the bank, but he's okay, and he did, he did the right thing.
Time's up, sir.
Just doesn't make sense.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
James Bolden, fourteen Timbrook Street. One thing that Mr. Robinson did say that was correct, I can remember when people in the neighborhoods used to write numbers and people were raised out of poverty into the middle class by number writing, and the state did take that over and...
Mr. Bolden, can you please, Mr. Bolden, can you please move closer? Just have the microphone, you can, the microphone can move.
And if it was a disorganized crime, it's organized now, and it took a lot of resources out of our communities. And Mr. Robinson was correct about that. I'll be brief about this next issue. When I lived at three-nineteen South Pearl Street, right across from the right that they're trying to close, right around the corner, lived a guy named Bob Brown. He was a math genius. And he wound up getting straight A's at school one with me, straight A's at Hackett, and straight A's at Albany High, and he became a math major in college and the first black mayor of Orange, New Jersey. And Councilman Robinson, Councilman Johnson remembers him, I'm sure. So of, and he was an extremely nice person and a genius. And I think if indeed I see all these names coming up, and I'm not knocking anyone, who am I to judge anyone? But we should remember Bob Brown, I believe Councilman Johnson would think the same way. I'm here mainly to talk about the, and by the way, Bob gave me this shirt just before he passed away, so that's why I'm wearing it tonight. My first real exposure to Albany police was when I, when I left three-nineteen Pearl, I went to one-twenty-one Green Street. And as many of you probably don't know, Albany had one of the largest red light districts in the nation. And I would, and it was infamous for that. In fact, I have, if anyone wants to read it, a commission from the state that closed down the brothels, the drug dens, and other places that were in the south end of Albany. And I would see police on a regular basis, every shift, they would collect bribes. And from the brothels, there were two on my block, three on the next block, five on the alleyway. So that was my first exposure. And my relatives and friends, their parents would go to jail, but the guy across the street who ran the skin hole, he would never go, Mr. Fisher. I didn't know his first name, but I found out what his first name was. His first name was Sheriff Fisher. He was the Albany County Sheriff, that's why he could run the skin hole. What, and Albany had a history of just beating people. Not all the cops were bad, but some of them would call me and said, "Dear brother, your cousin, get down here fast before something happens to him." And I was in my forties before I start getting nervous and sweating when I went past the Arch Street precinct. And I stopped when I realized that the people who weren't sweating and getting nervous were the ones who had the problem, cause I should be sweating and getting nervous, and then I, I still don't go down there that much, though. What I say is that with the Dante Ivy thing, and with this recent thing we're having, some of those old thoughts are coming to, are coming up again. And my, I have a real concern about those two gentlemen who spent twenty years in prison, who were innocent and was tortured and tormented into confessing, and no one seems to be doing anything or saying anything about it.
One minute left, sorry.
I want to know exactly, and I think all the council members do wanna know, is there anyone else in prison who was tortured and tormented into signing a confession? And I think the police need to really be looked at by an independent source, as another speaker said. The time has come for us to take a serious, hard look at the police department in Albany, because as I'm thinking, things are starting to rise again in terms of my thoughts about the past practices of the police, I'm sure other folks are having them also. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Seeing there are no more speakers signed up for public comment at this time, we deem public comment period closed. Moving on to our agenda, approval of minutes, Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm moving for the minutes of the August twentieth, regularly meeting and August twenty-first.
Do I...
Second. Hi.
Minutes approved. Moving on to consideration of laws, local laws held, uh, Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, local law change twenty eighteen is now, and I know this is local law F of twenty eighteen, uh, request passage and a local.
Thank you. Uh, can a clerk please read the local law?
Local law amending Article forty-seven and Part thirty-six of Chapter forty-two of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to the terms of appointment to the Human Rights Commission.
Is there any discussion on the local law? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Nani?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Plares?
Yes.
Mr. Ba, um, Mr. Conti? Mr. O'Shea?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ms. Fahy?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Igle?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Twelve affirmative?
Thank you, uh, local law passes. Um, any reports of standing committees? Seeing no reports, uh, Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. Human Resources and Human Rights, uh, met on the twenty-third of, uh, August to consider local R F that we just passed, uh, which was a technical adjustment to the term limits of Human Rights Commission members. During that meeting, we also discussed, uh, Resolution sixty-five eighteen, eighty-one eighteen R and sixty-four eighty-one eighteen R, which were resolutions reappointing members Brenda Robinson and Linda Hunt to the Human Rights Commission. All, uh, matters passed favorably from the committee and moved on to the council. Also, September eleventh, uh, was, uh, Human Resources and Human Rights who sat to interview applicants for, uh, the two vacancies on the Human Rights Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough. Any other reports? Seeing none? Ms. O'Shea?
I just wanna, um, mention that we have a Finance Taxation Assessment Committee meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, September, uh, twelfth, uh, right after caucus. And we will be taking up, uh, two resolutions and, uh, talking about, um, the budget, uh, process review of the budget, uh, moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Shea. Any others? Seeing none? We'll move on to considerations of ordinances and we'll move to ordinance introduced. Ms., Ms. Fahy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance thirty-three ninety-one eighteen and ask for its introduction.
Can a clerk please read the res, ordinance, please?
An ordinance amending paragraph B and paragraph C of Part Three of Chapter three seventy-five and Part Six of Chapter three seventy-five of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to the operation of blood plasma centers.
Mr. Conti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, the pass, uh, that ordinance is referred to the planning committee, for further consideration, remain ordinance on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Moving on to resolutions, consideration of resolutions. And moving to resolutions introduced, uh, Ms. O'Shea?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution sixty-eight point ninety-one point eighteen R for introduction.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council amending Resolution thirty fifty-two eighteen R that authorizes and directed the acceptance of funds from New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation for the South End Trail Connector Low Line Linear Park.
Sixty-eight ninety-one?
Okay. My apologies. Resolution of the Common Council resolved the City of Albany hereby certifies pursuant to New York State Real Property Law, Section nineteen oh three, the attached applicable homestead and non-homestead base proportions for adjusted homestead and non-homestead base proportions for the two thousand eighteen tax year.
Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President, and for the finance.
Thank you, sir. Uh, moving on to, continue with resolutions introduced, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice, uh, Resolution sixty-eight, no, sixty-nine ninety-one eighteen R and I ask for its introduction and passage.
Thank you, sir. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council amending Resolution thirty fifty-two eighteen R.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Nani?
Yes.
Mr. Plares?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Mr. Conti? Ms. O'Shea? Ms. Fahy? Ms. Farrell? Mr. Flynn? Mr. Igle? Mr. Johnson? Mr. Kimbrough? Ms. Love? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Twelve affirmative?
Thank you. Uh, continuing on with, uh, resolution passes, continuing on with resolution introduced, Mr. Johnson? Seventy, seventy ninety-one?
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, I notice seventy point ninety-one point eighteen R and I ask for its introduction. Yes.
And we'll take a roll, roll call vote on that? It's gonna be held? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Conti. Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution of the Common Council honoring the achievements of George Marbury for his work as president of Steamboat Square Tenant Association and the Citywide Tenant Council by naming Green Street between Rensselaer Street and Fourth Avenue in his honor.
And that will be held, okay, thank you, Mr. Conti? Do I get a second? There's a second, any fair, all those in favor? Uh, add it to tonight's agenda, Mr. Kimbrough?
Which, which, which resolution?
I believe that's the seventy-one?
She's in opposition to add it, but I just want the whole resolution, if you just read it.
All those in favor, so we have one opposition of added to the agenda. But motion passes. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution seventy-one ninety-one eighteen R and ask for its passage.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to an adjustment in salary for the deputy city clerk for the two thousand eighteen budget.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Mr. K?
Are you talking about seventy-one? On seventy-one, I would like to talk about it.
I can't hear you, Ms., Ms. O'Shea?
I would like to read, I just keep on the resolutions.
Okay. Ms. O'Shea?
Just to be clear, because I don't have a paper copy in front of me, that we are talking about the, uh, resolution to increase the compensation for the deputy clerk? All right. I am voting against this. I was just clarifying that we're talking about the comp, uh, the resolution to increase the compensation for the deputy clerk. Uh, while this is an increase in compensation of, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars for a two-month period, it essentially annualizes the equivalent of compensating the deputy clerk an additional, uh, increasing her salary by fifteen thousand dollars a year. Almost thirty percent, almost a thirty percent increase for these, uh, increase in her salary for these, uh, two months. I voted for a similar compensation schedule last year with, um, some reservations. And as I have done more research, uh, into this, and we've been provided with more information, I realize that, uh, that was probably an incorrect, uh, vote on my part, uh, last year. And, uh, so I will not be, uh, supporting a similar, uh, resolution, uh, this year. Um, this resolution, uh, is inequitable. Um, and it is fiscally irresponsible. It's fiscally irresponsible in a city that is in deep financial trouble. It is premised on the idea that the deputy clerk has performed additional functions for this council. Not additional time, she's not putting additional time for this council, but on the premise that she has performed additional functions that are outside her job responsibilities. I have asked for a list and not been provided with a list of the specific responsibilities that she has provided us with that actually fall outside her job description. And I believe that what we have been provided with in terms of a list neatly fall within her job description. Amongst those responsibilities, uh, that fall within her job description is assisting in preparing material for the common council meetings. This is specifically on her job, uh, uh, in the list that she is seeking additional compensation for. Her job description includes publishing legal notices. This is also something that she has said has taken up a lot of time that she is seeking additional compensation for. Mind you, these are in her job description when she took the position. Uh, performing a variety of clerical and routine administrative duties. Acting for the clerk and for the clerk of the common council when necessary. If that's not supporting the common council, uh, in a wide variety of ways, then I don't know what is. And that is specifically what she is asking to be additionally compensated for, even though that's in her job description. Doing related work. Let me repeat that penultimate responsibility, acting for the city clerk and the clerk of the common council when necessary. The clerk, the city clerk is actually our clerk pursuant to the second-class cities law and pursuant to other provisions in our own code. We are given responsibility for hiring and firing that person because that person's primary responsibility is to assist the common council. The second-class cities law allows the de, the city clerk to hire a deputy in the performance of his or her, uh, to assist him in the performance of his or her, uh, responsibilities. So the deputy clerk, and the deputy clerk is explicitly supposed to act instead of the city clerk whenever the city clerk is unavailable. The responsibilities of the city clerk include having the city clerk attend all common council meetings. That's because his primary job is to assist us. Uh, and that's explicit in the second-class cities law passed by the New York State Legislature. The city clerk is also required to keep a journal of our proceedings, transmit to the head of each department and the clerk of each board copies of all ordinances in any manner affecting the boards for which, uh, such department shall have jurisdiction. Following the passage of each ordinance, attesting to it and presenting it to the mayor. This particular function is one of the things that appear on the deputy clerk's responsibilities that she is asking for additional compensation for. It is within her existing responsibilities that she is being fully compensated for. Keeping a record book of every ordinance passed along with a signature of the president, attesting to the clerk and the mayor's written approval or disapproval. Our city charter reiterates most of these provisions, uh, in section, uh, three oh two, many of these provisions in three oh two. Additionally, the city, uh, code, uh, also contains many provisions which relate to the functions of the city clerk and his, uh, or her responsibilities that now appear in the listing that we were provided, that the deputy clerk is looking for additional compensation for. The city clerk is required to prepare for publication in the city record. Granted, we don't have one, but that does not mean that this legal requirement does not exist and that we don't have to do some sort of reasonable accommodation, uh, in compliance with this. Shall prepare for publication, a summary of all resolutions, ordinances and local laws introduced or passed, all recommendations of committees, all final proceedings, full copies of all messages from the mayor and all reports of city agencies. Now, we have a legislative aide who performs most of those functions most of the time for us. That doesn't take away from being the responsibility of the city clerk to make sure that that happens. Um, and therefore the deputy in assisting the city clerk in performing those kind of functions. I'm not gonna go into the list of activities again, um, that the deputy clerk has listed, but in my review of the list that we were provided, I'm not seeing anything that falls outside either the job descrip, the, the, uh, job description of, um, the deputy clerk or outside the second-class city law, the other codes and ordinances. Um, unless we're gonna get hyper-technical about maybe one or two of, of the items. The deputy clerk has listed in the responsibilities that she is asking for additional compensation to coordinate and schedule and notice committee meetings. This is in the first two months of the common council, uh, of, uh, two thousand and eighteen in which the finance committee was the only committee that met. I prepared the notices, I arranged for the meetings, I scheduled peoples, I checked with people regarding their schedules. I provided the notice to the clerk for publication. I arranged for the room. Uh, I arranged for speakers to come, such as the treasurer and the assessor to come and talk to us. I had no contact whatsoever with the deputy clerk regarding that. I've talked to council members about other responsibilities that are listed that were, um, not primarily performed by the, uh, deputy clerk and were really wind up being minor accommodations of, of time. The President Pro Tem has said he agrees that the, these are the responsibilities of the deputy clerk and it's important for the clerk's office to understand that these, there is this responsibility to support the council. Compensating the deputy clerk for performing her duties delivers a different message to her, to the city clerk and to all city employees. I want to emphasize that this is an extra three hundred dollars of work a week to perform the duties of the deputy clerk. Her current salary works out to be thirty dollars an hour. So the three hundred dollars essentially is the equivalent of ten hours a week of work. But we have been told that she has put in no overtime. We also do not have time sheets showing this. We do not have one iota of documentation regarding actual hours worked. Only a vague confirmation that she did work for the council without clarifying what work was actually outside of her job responsibilities, since her job responsibilities specifically talk about supporting the common council, noticing meetings, potentially attending meetings instead of the clerk. Assuming that she put in ten Assuming that she put in ten hours a week, and we don't have any documentation of that, what the council is doing if it passes this resolution is essentially doubling her hourly compensation for ten hours a week, not overtime, from thirty dollars an hour to sixty dollars an hour. The equivalent of compensating her annually at that rate would be over a hundred thousand dollars a year. An option here, if the deputy clerk wants to be performing, wants to be compensated for performing functions in a position that she left, that is a lower-paying position, and she wants to be recognized for that, is for her to take vacation time, personal leave time, and say, yes, I was performing those functions and not acting as a deputy clerk, and therefore I should, I need to not be paid double, so I should, so I should leave my position, make it clear that I'm working in that function, that position, and then she could be compensated by the common council for acting as a legislative aide without being paid double for working the same number of hours for when she was doing her common council work, which is in her job description. I vote against this resolution because it is fiscally irresponsible. It sets a bad, bad precedent, as we have learned from what we did last year. It is unfair to the other employees who go above and beyond the duty, who are not being treated similarly. If we are going to be compensating people for acting above and beyond, then we should have a system that is not arbitrary and capricious, but actually looks at evaluations, looks at the work that is actually done, actually calculates, provide some sort of calculation, and make sure all employees in the city who are performing above and beyond the duty have the ability to be compensated for in the same way that is proposed that we do it now. Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Brien.
Okay, I do plan on voting for this, and we had an extensive discussion in the caucus tonight. I don't think it's a revelation to us that normally people in executive positions in government have very expansive job descriptions. In fact, I think if tonight we were to ask Gerald to go through all of his duties as clerk, and he was also a deputy clerk, we would probably be here past midnight, and it would serve no useful purpose to go through that long recitation. What I think is undeniable, in all the time that I've been on the council, we have had a legislative assistant, Michelle is invaluable, we need her, and it's clearly a full-time job. So when somebody is doing additional duties for a limited period of time, to me, it seems logical, totally justifiable, reasonable, that they should expect some additional compensation. Can I quantify that exactly what it's supposed to be? No. But Gerald told us he thought it was reasonable, the council leadership met with Kishana, they thought it was reasonable. I'm perfectly willing to accept that it's a reasonable amount of money and willing to vote for it tonight, and I don't think we're breaking any shocking ground, because I don't think we're violating any job description, because job descriptions for the type of job that Gerald has, and previous type of job that he has, are obviously written to be very expansive, and I suppose we could argue that Gerald should be doing everything because it's in his job description, and that would be a total flaw. So, to me, it's common sense, I'm not going to burden you with hours of discussion about what is or is not in somebody's job description. To me, it's common sense to vote for it.
Thank you. Mr. Pleers.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to say that at a time when elected officials cannot respectfully disagree, I want to start by saying I respect the opinion of those who disagree with the compensation on the floor, as I hope that that respect can be also extended. The other point that I want to make is that I, out of respect for this being a personnel matter, want to, in some ways, apologize to the deputy clerk and the clerk for this playing out publicly as it is a personnel matter, and if it were me, I would feel very uncomfortable with my personnel issues being discussed in detail publicly, so I do apologize. Without getting in the weeds on what was discussed in executive session, I will make the point as to why I feel that, or why I support this piece of legislation. The reality is, many of our workers in the city are underpaid, we do have fiscal challenges. At the same time, when it comes to compensating people, I am very liberal, and I will be honest with that. I was a council member who introduced legislation for council members to get a raise. I supported most recently the police chief getting a raise, and I firmly believe that if someone is acting in the role of two people, then in that case, the person should at least receive some level of compensation. We have a legislative aide for a reason, and at a time, there was a lapse in having someone in that place, and so someone had to pick up the slack and do the work in addition to performing their additional duties as assigned. I can't speak to everybody's experience, however, every time that I contacted or inquired about work that needed to be done, that typically a legislative aide would do, in the absence of a legislative aide, that work was done without complaints. And so with that, I feel strongly that in this case, there was an individual performing double duty, despite what we've talked about in terms of what's in the job description and what's not, I feel that that person should be compensated for the time spent during the work. And then the last point that I will make is, there have been various comments about people's personal experiences at organizations and people personally stepping up to do work and not get compensated. I have worked in a variety of settings, some in which if a person was performing multiple responsibilities in the absence of another, that person was compensated. On the flip side, I have been in predicaments in which people were asked to do additional work and were not. In this case, we have the opportunity to compensate someone for stepping up, and for that, I will be strongly supporting this piece of legislation. And then the last point being, there was clearly a lack of communication with the person in question about expectations. That should not be at the fault of the individual who is requesting compensation for the work done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will not take long, because a lot of points have been made, but I will be supporting this measure tonight, and I just can't believe that we spent more time talking about this one piece of, this one subject than we did about the forty-five thousand dollars that we agreed to give a person who never worked a day in our city. As I, when I voted against that, I spoke to the morale of the city workers, and this is another example of that morale, that we are going to question someone that stepped up. So I don't want to be long-winded, and I know what it feels like to be responsible to do somebody's job for a day, but when you're doing somebody's job for indefinite period of time, I think that that should be taken in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Moving on in the agenda, two resolutions, moving on to resolutions held. Ms. Fahey, I mean, sorry, sorry. Mr. Conti, would you like to hold? Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed resolution sixty-four eighty-one eighteen R. And ask for its passage.
Can a clerk please read the resolution? Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Yeah, yes, co-sponsor, please.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed resolution sixty-five eighty-one eighteen R. And ask for its passage.
Can the clerk please read the resolution? Discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Moving on to miscellaneous and unfinished business, Mr. O'Brien.
One of the items that we did not discuss in our caucus, because we didn't really discuss any agenda-wide items except for one, is the ordinance regarding blood plasma centers, and I'll be very brief. Previously, we sent this back to the planning director because we did not feel that his memo was accurate in terms of history of this legislation, so he sent us a new memo in which he says basically everything he said the first time, but he happens to add one sentence that basically the planning board overruled his original recommendation of a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot separation. I thought that that's kind of a sham response, because he still holds fast to, the board spent hours, entertained this motion for three consecutive months, and there's not a word about all the discussions that were had to cause the board to disagree with the planning director, and I thought that was what we were asking him for, was some kind of a justification as to the history of how this language of this ordinance evolved, and he, to this day, apparently is refusing to give that to us, and just simply adding the one obvious sentence that he was overruled. So I'm very disappointed in that, and I would also note that I had requested the audio of that planning board meeting where this was voted on, I requested that back in July, I never got it, so I would ask that the council leadership request it. Maybe they will respond to you far quicker than they have responded to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Conti. Second? Hold on, Ms. Love? Are you second in motion, or do you? Mr. All, the motion, thank you. Ms. Love.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to talk about the recent shooting of the Williams kid that was shot in the back by one of our own officers. I just want to make the council aware that I have been working along with my war leader and other members of my ward to try to get answers on what's going on with the shooting. I have talked to Alice Green, I have talked to NAACP, Gwen Pope. I just don't want people to think that nobody's in the third ward is not trying to get answers and not trying to rectify what's going on. We all should be working together as a collective, and when you work against one another, it don't work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Conti, on your motion? Second? All in favor?